It is now 6:30. Madam Chair, may I call the meeting to order by reading the required blurb?
Please.
Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on our website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effect will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after this meeting.
Thank you. All right. So I want to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. We do have two members absent as well. But are there public comments? Anybody from the public that wishes to comment tonight?
Madam Chair, it may seem superfluous, but we do need to let everyone know that this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded.
Oh, thank, good catch, Christina. Thank you.
No problem.
Any member of the public, I don't know how they could, they could contact you, right, and get in?
They could.
Okay. All right. Hearing no members of the public, we'll close the comment period.
One moment. We do have a Jennifer Sherwood who is on this call, who is not, as I, that I'm aware, connected to anything we're doing tonight. So I'm not sure if she wishes to speak during public.
Ask her.
Ms. Sherwood, I see you are unmuted. Would you like to speak during public comment?
Hi, yes, sorry about that. Yeah, I think Anna Chavez, who is our project manager, may also have an opportunity to speak.
Oh, I see. I apologize. You're associated with Clearway. I didn't recognize your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just joined and I was dialing in, so I didn't hear, saw you talking. Apologies.
Okay.
We'll get to you, Ms. Sherwood. We'll get to you.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
What, what public comment is just people that want to speak to our board about things not on the agenda necessarily. So, okay, so the next thing is we do have a set of minutes to approve from February 5, 2020. I was not present at that meeting, but I have reviewed them carefully and the tape. So I'm, I can vote on that. Are there, does anybody have that did attend comments or? A bar of my board members?
No.
You want to make a motion, Bill? To approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I need a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. That's right. Alice Livedall, aye?
Don Swisher, aye.
Bill Holman's, aye.
Okay.
Thanks. All in favor. Thank you.
For our, for our listeners, that's part of the, the rules here for remote meetings. Okay, so our act, on our action items, we have, we start with two A and R plans. And the first is for the property at 41 Morgan Road. And is it Jeffrey Stefanic is here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to say anything about this? I guess we could sort of inform the public a little bit about it.
I can inform the public if you wish.
Yes, please do that. It'll help out.
My name is Jeff Stefanic. I'm a land surveyor with Gurir and Hawnon and plan for approval not required. And 43 Morgan Road. Now, there are two buildings on this property at present. It was formerly Stevens College. I think one of the buildings was a dormitory and maybe the offices, but be that as a matter. We are splitting this into three lots, one of which would be vacant. The other two lots would have existing buildings. So each house would have its own lot unlike the present time. And parcel A is another piece of property that is intended to be butter at 45 Morgan Road. So that is what we're asking the board to endorse. The three lots meet zoning and I believe they're entitled to endorsement as approval not required.
Okay, I had, we had raised, I know we couldn't do anything last time. We didn't have a quorum, but the name issue. Did that, did that get resolved? Is it's?
Is named Lance Delogano. That is the owner's name on the plan.
Okay, on the Mylar. Okay.
He recently acquired the property.
What, please?
He recently acquired the property.
Okay, okay. Because I know the assessors list still listed auger, but I understand. Okay, I just wasn't corrected on the plan I had seen. So this, these two buildings, yeah, I think you're right. Yes, we have to prove it's an A and R. I just had a couple of, just more in the way of comments. One of which is, is you go to develop this lot, are you aware that Morgan Road is a scenic way? We have a scenic way by law in town?
Yes.
Because I did drive by and I noticed there were some nice walls and those issues have arisen before. So if you want to, you know, put, breach the wall or cut the trees or whatever is covered in that, you, you have to go through a process.
Yes.
All right. And then the other thing is, there's only, these two houses share a well?
At present, they share a well, yes.
So that would have to be resolved for them each to be a separate dwelling unit?
That would be part of the, the building permit process or Board of Health. I don't think that comes under the purview of an A and R, though.
No, okay. And is the big building occupied at the present time?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had is, I, you, you show on the plan a pool?
It's a pool. It's in very poor condition, but it's fenced off. It doesn't have water in it. That's why we say it's in disrepair.
Okay, so the eventual intention of that would be to probably fill it in or?
I would think so.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have further questions. I was really concerned about the name issue because it could look confusing to me. And we, you don't need a vote to sign it. We have to come in and actually sign the Mylar. Is that correct, Christina?
Yes, what's going to happen is, is if everyone agrees to sign the Mylar tonight verbally, then I will take today's date and have the date put on the Mylar and each of you will come in separately per restrictions for COVID and sign the Mylar at, by appointment in Town Hall. And then I'll make sure it gets back to Mr. Stefanic.
Okay, let's do one step at a time. Do all the people on the board have questions about this plan? Bill?
I missed part of what you said. I hit the button to turn it down.
Excuse me. Any questions about the Morgan Road plan?
No, I have none.
Okay, I went through the checklist and I think Christina did as well. Francois, any questions?
I can't hear you, Francois.
How about now?
Much better.
Okay, sorry about that. At this time, no questions.
Okay, so Christina, I would like to, since they've already waited a whole extra week, is there, are people going to be around tomorrow or is?
I can call everyone individually and set up appointments so that we can get this done as quickly as possible.
Okay, can you guys try to accommodate them either tomorrow or Monday?
I'm available tomorrow during the day after, after probably 10:30.
And I can come in tomorrow too, Christina, so.
Okay. I'll call and, and each of you and make sure we have an appointment if, tomorrow or Monday at the latest to sign this. And then Mr. Stefanic, I'll be in touch with you with regards to getting you the Mylar back you need.
Great. Well, thank you all very much.
Well, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Take care.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we have another A and R. It's 36 Gardner Road and Mark Curtis is here. Was it?
One moment, I'm going to unmute him.
Okay.
And Mr. Curtis, if you could unmute your own audio. That should be in the bottom. There you are.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Curtis, we have your plan. Do you want to tell us anything about this plan?
Well, it's, it's basically a parcel land over off 36 Gardner Road, which is Route 68. And I'm just in the midst of breaking out a subdivision a lot for a neighbor that's up the street. And that's pretty much it. It meets all the frontage requirements and the, you know, the amount of bakery and everything. And that's really about it.
Got a small little area of wetland in one corner in the lot line?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I didn't, I did go again. I went through this checklist. Probably my plan did too, of all the things we need for A and Rs. And it seems to fit with me. I do know that there's the back, it's a, it's one of these lot that straddles two zoning, two zones, but only that back corner, right?
Correct. The far, the far back corner, there is a zoning line change there where it goes back to residential.
Yes. Okay.
Just to be clear that this, if I may.
Sure.
This is, this is, this is currently a commercial zoned lot, correct?
Correct.
Francois, except for the tiny back corner, the triangle?
Yes, but the piece that is actually going to be divided, yeah, in its, I mean, these will be two commercial lots then, right?
Correct.
I know exactly where this is because it's a very prominent place in town. Any comments from Bill?
No, I'm all set. I know where it is. I have no questions. As long as you went through your checklist for the A and R's, I'm all set, Alice.
I think both Christine and I did that. So I'm again willing to sign and Christina, we, if you all are ready to sign, we could sign them both at the same time, perhaps, when we come in?
Yes, I will bring all the copies into Town Hall tomorrow or Monday, depending on when people are available.
Okay, and then you'll give Mr. Curtis a call?
Yes, to work on getting his, his Mylar back to him so he can file it with the Worcester Registry deeds.
Okay. We wish you good luck on your projects.
Okay, and thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
You too.
Great. Now, has Bill showed up right yet?
Yes, he is on the call.
Okay. Bill, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. So you, you're actually up next on the agenda is reporting on the status of 91 Williamsville Road. I know we have a little bit background for, but you want to bring us up to date on that?
91 is Clearview? Or is that the other?
No, Clearway is the, the 147 Williamsville Road. 91 Williamsville Road is the berm across from Mr. LeBlanc's house.
Yep. Okay, so I've coordinated with the contractor. They've removed all the objectionable soil that was, the original berm was made out of. They pulled all the plants out. I was there yesterday and they've installed clean fill. They're going to top it with topsoil and they're going to be planting it in the next week so that they're meeting the objectives that they promised that they would do. I've looked at the soil. The soil looks virgin soil. It doesn't look like it's from a previous construction site. And they've told me that they have a plan to irrigate it once they plant it for at least two weeks. So it looks like they're doing what they've said. One of the criteria that I told them was that they needed to make sure that the butter across the street Scott was happy. And they have informed me, though I haven't spoken to them, that he's very happy with what they're doing. The berm is going to be more substantial, properly built, and 18 inches higher earthwork wise, plus planting on the top.
It was pretty low actually and sinking. So that's good.
They did, they did rebuild the stone wall a little bit to restack it.
Okay, and what about the gate, Bill?
There's no comment on the gate. I don't know whether they're going to board it or how they're going to obscure it.
But you're going to remind them that's part of the deal.
Yep.
Yeah. And also, you know, in this kind of drought, two weeks of watering is not going to get you very far. Can you, can you get?
We're, we're kind of hoping that this week will break and we'll start getting rain, but it doesn't really matter. It's their obligation to water it until the plants are well established. So if they, they die, they're going to have to replace them.
So it's in their interest too?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm glad that Mr. LeBlanc was reached out to. All right, well, do you have a follow-up then? You have to follow up because you have to follow up on the gate at some point, right?
Right. No, I, I visit it at least once a week to see what the status is and make sure I know what's going on and make sure that the, the fill was clean that came into the site, which was one of my big concerns.
Yeah. I know that you said it was just sort of dirt on top of slash and it was a mess before, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I also go by there numerous times a week and I've been watching them do what they're doing. And they're doing, I think they're doing a good job also.
Well, that's really encouraging because they haven't been up that way. So thank you, Bill. And actually, you're the next item on the agenda as well, which is 147 Williamsville Road. And I know you've given us a letter, an opinion letter on this, but it's the extension of a solar field permit.
I'm going to unmute audio on Ms. Chavez and Ms. Sherwood at this point because they're here about that property as well.
Yes. Do I need to say anything again or could they hear me?
No, they can hear you. It's just they're, they'll be allowed to speak now.
Yep.
Ms. Chavez or Ms. Sherwood, did you have any comments about the 147 Williamsville Road project?
Yes, sorry. This is Anna Chavez from Clearway Energy. We had submitted this request for a special permit extension. We actually believe, since, since the date that we had submitted that request, we've come to realize that it likely makes the most sense for parties, for us to withdraw that request for extension. After reading your consultant's memo that he had, had prepared, we also reached out to our council and they concurred with, with the guidance that he had provided, that the permit was, was still in full force and effect, given the ongoing and, and late stage construction on site. So we apologize for, for kind of revving the engines for, for no real reason here. We wanted to come before you today anyways because we, we did submit this request, but just to see whether that withdrawal was agreeable to you or if you had any further questions.
Okay, I, I think the, the reasoning is very good. It's basically, you've started construction substantially, so we don't need to issue a new permit. And I think if you try to issue a new permit or an extension of a permit, you know, you're not, I'm not into creating issues I don't need to create. But I, I did want to ask you, and I appreciate your clarification of the ownership. This is always confusing to the planning board. Is, is this property still owned by Rogers and Schlener, the two individuals?
Yep, you got it. Dennis, Roger, and Schlener.
So they're owners and you, and then, okay, so then the permit was issued to Borrego Solar. And, and then in your letter of 8/21, you said the, that's are owned by Williamsville Solar, which is wholly owned subsidiary of Borrego, correct? Is that right?
Correct. And then Clearway acquired that project company, 147 Williamsville Solar LLC from Borrego.
Okay, so that was my question. The plan, so the plan, actually, the plan, I have, the plan is to transfer the assets to NRG Solar? Did that happen?
So, and our, yeah, this is, this is understandably confusing. NRG, Clearway is a spinout of NRG. So I guess when we were, I worked for NRG when I managed that acquisition. So, and then Clearway is just kind of the new name of our solar company.
So is Clearway NRG or subsidiary of NRG or a?
We are a separate entity now.
Separate. Okay, so the leaseholder right now for the solar fee, for the land and the owner of the equipment is all Clearway now? Is that correct?
All the project company that is, so it remains the project company, 147 Williamsville Road LLC. But owner of that project company is Clearway now.
So through, through the chair, they, they need to give us an additional notification that it went from NRG to Clearway? Is that how this is going?
So I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, answer that because that's his, that's my question too. I want to make sure that our records are straight. Somebody, who, who owns the bond? Who, if the neighbor complains, we get hold of? You know, I just, I just really need clarity on who, right?
Sure. So it's still, this, I believe the con, I can, let me double check the contact person that was, I think I was the contact that was provided in the letter. So let me just double check that as we're speaking here. The, because the, the owner of the project remains William, 147 Williamsville LLC, I don't believe any new notices required, but I'm happy to, to draft a letter and send it to you so that you, you know, have the Clearway name and make sure you have my contact information.
Okay, so the bond is still in the name of Borrego Solar or was that transferred? Is this substantial?
It should be in the name of 147 Williamsville.
Okay. And is that right, every, Christina or Bill, if you know?
Yeah, the bond got transferred, the ownership of the project along with the bond got transferred when they took over 147 Williamsville Road LLC. But if you read the, the special permit, it says any transfer of the ownership and contact, et cetera, et cetera, must be reported to the planning board 90 days in advance of the transfer. So if NRG took it over and then Clearway became an inheritor or a subsidiary or whatever of NRG, then they need to update all the contact information and confirm that they're the sole owner of 147 Williamsville LLC, including the bond, and they accept all the requirements of the special permit. The problem we've been having is these things get sold left and right and we don't know who the point of contact is. And more importantly, the bond must be carried through. So while the entity that Borrego set up is 147 Williamsville Road LLC, it appears, and Ms. Chavez, correct me if I'm wrong, it appears that it went to one purchaser and then to a subsidiary.
So the purchaser, what is this, the, this, this is all kind of project financing here. So the purchaser was a subsidiary of NRG called Solar DG LLC. And that subsidiary still exists in Clearway. And so tech, if you, if you technically, I, I think technically there's no trigger of the notice of ownership change. That being said, I think that it probably just makes sense for me to draft a letter and kind of, so that it's on Clearway letterhead and provide, make sure you have all the up-to-date contact information. And I'm happy to, you know, specifically note that we accept all conditions in the special permit, rather than try to kind of so happy to demonstrate like the ownership that doesn't trigger that, but it might just be simplest and most clear for the town, for you to kind of have the refreshed, actual, you know, parent company name.
Sure, but I direct you to the special permit. And it doesn't say ownership. It says ownership or control and authority or, or words to that effect. So we're really trying to make sure that we understand if there is an issue, who it is that the town needs to contact. If the bond needs to be refreshed or updated and, and funded, we need to know who that entity is. So it's, we're not, through the, through the chair, we're not trying to be punitive. We're just trying to make sure our records are straight.
Okay, that makes perfect sense.
Excuse me. Point of order, Bill, did you determine whether in your conversations with Ms. Chavez or Borrego, if you contacted them, whether the amount of money set aside for your services for the completion of construction were transferred from Borrego to Clearway? Because there is the bond, which is the decommissioning fee, but the planning board is also in possession of $12,000 of Borrego's money to pay you for project completion and oversight. And that, as far as I know, that is still Borrego's funds. I just want to make sure that that gets clarified as well because I don't want to be cutting a check to you for project completion, that the money should be coming from Clearway, but I have a check here from Borrego.
Borrego did address that in their letter. Borrego said that they would continue to be responsible for all the special permit, construction, completion and closeout criteria.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I've seen emails to that effect.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And I just wonder if, Anne, Anna Chavez, do you want to also note in your letter that the, just as a note, that the, who the property owners are?
Sure.
I mean, it would be a public record anyway, but.
Yep, I can clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Are there further questions? So, oh, so I don't think we need to vote. If you're withdrawing your special permit extension request, we don't need to take any votes, as long as my board members in agreement that that's an appropriate action. Because I don't want to, I don't want to say, no, you don't need to come to us and then have somebody say, well, we didn't agree with Bill. They should have, you know what I mean? So is everybody reasonably happy if they withdraw their permit to?
Bill Holman's, I agree.
Okay, and?
I, I do think you need to vote to accept the withdrawal.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion that we accept the withdrawal.
Okay.
From I don't remember who applied for the.
Clearway.
Clearway, though. Thank you.
Clearway for 147 Williamsville Road.
Correct.
At this point in time, I would like to second that motion.
All right. Is there further discussion?
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
None.
Okay, we got a, again, roll call vote. So Livedall, yes?
Bill Holman, yes.
Don Swisher, yes.
All in favor, recorded. Thank you.
All right. We'll, we'll look for your letter.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll get that off to you shortly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Bill.
Yeah, Bill, I think that's the last thing on the, that, uh, you had to be here for tonight. So if you want to leave us.
I thought I missed the meeting last night. I was very upset.
Yeah, well, we did this because, oh, we should tell you, Bill, we are thinking, you know, our reorganization meeting is the next meeting. And it is possible that we will reschedule meetings on Thursday nights or Tuesday nights because Craig, you know, on our board, is in the Fire Academy, which is meeting virtually on Wednesday nights and we need him. Is there a night that you could not make, between Wednesdays and, or between Tuesday and Thursday, if we change it?
Wednesday nights.
It's the only night?
I can't make.
You can't make?
Cannot, right.
Well, Thursday would be actually better for you.
Yes.
All right. All right. And then I'll talk to the board again and we'll get back to you. We, we also have the problem of the next meeting being right on the top, July 2nd. So, yeah, we do have, we have to talk about it later, but it's a five Wednesday, five Thursday month too, I think. So you may just bump it to the second. I don't know. We'll be in touch. I'll note that Bill can make it on Thursdays because that would be important. You're consulting on so many things. Okay. Excellent. All right.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay if you want. Is John Hugh with us? Oh, no. With us.
Both of them are.
I'm here too.
Oh, very good. Wait a minute, we have, yes, you're the next item on the agenda. This is the report on, this is listed as report on status of master plan, but I think it's also a report on the facilities and service chapter you submitted, right?
Uh, it's more specifically the services and facilities chapter of the master plan. But we can also give a, a general update on where we are with the master plan.
Well, who wants an update besides me? Anybody on the board?
Absolutely.
All right. If you would do that, we'd appreciate it. All right, if you would do that, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just because, you know, it's been such a strong out process and we lose track of where we are, so.
Okay, well, we finished the transportation chapter. A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
So that chapter is completed. I've been working on the housing chapter. And I'd like to present that next month. We're pretty much on track. Jonathan wanted to talk about a rough draft. Services and facility inventory and analysis without the recommendations tonight. But we did take a lot of the information that the town had on its website. And I understand that that's outdated, but this is a rough draft. So that's what we're looking for, we're looking for comments from the town's committees. In boards for it, but Jonathan can talk a bit about the draft services and facilities. Analysis now and show you where we're at. But we are going to need community input, well. Committee and board input to make this assessment factual and updated. So did you want to talk about that, Jonathan?
Can I just ask a question to, to both of you guys? Which is, you're talking, you've seen the MVP report, right?
Uh, I've been working on it.
All right, so that should help you with the chapter incredibly, shouldn't it, should it not?
Uh, to a degree. They, they do cover some pretty divergent areas, but with the. Facilities and services and some of the areas in town, they do overlap a little bit.
Okay, I just wanted to, I knew that, I knew that you guys had a big stake in that too. But I didn't know you were all the same team, so. So go ahead, yeah.
Um, all right, oh, and Alice, we've already looked at the feedback you gave us. So I will address it towards the end if there's anything else and if you, anybody wants to interrupt.
On what I did is, because I don't, you'll, you'll get a copy of it for, from Christina. But what I said was, if you look at the, the. The part of the plan that talks about the various boards and committees in town, they have descriptions. And I don't know where those descriptions came from, but some of them are, they don't really mesh well with. You know, the committees, the way it's assigned. So I suggested to them that they look down. They look at the pull down menu on the town website that each board and committee has that describes what they do.
Yep.
I was talking to Christina, I said, well, how long, how old are they? You know, because this becomes part of the problem, right? And she says that whole website came online and. I think Christina, correct me, 2013, maybe?
Uh, you're muted, Christina, sorry.
So, thank you. I'm not positive, but I think it was 2013. I'd have to double check with someone who manages the website.
So, so I think it's probably newer than what you had. But then I thought, well, maybe you drew from, you know, some sacred document in town that I'm unaware of or something, but. Where, where did they come from?
Uh, most of the descriptions did come from the town website where there were some present. Some of them, we weren't able to get anything. There are two in particular. The library of board trustees and the school information. Didn't have a description that we saw, that we found of their roles and responsibilities.
Would, would, would you like us to contact them?
Um, if you think that would be more efficient. That if you were to reach out as, as another board in town. And they would respond quicker than, that if, that's the best way to go about it, then absolutely.
Well, our, our only role as the planning boards is supposedly the oversight committee for the master plan. So we have an arguable, you know, reason to, to contact them. Who, who are the boards, the library committee and?
Uh, it's the, let me pull up the. Document right here. There are two that don't have any description at all, which is the library trustees under the boards and committees of the town.
Okay.
And then the. School information under town departments.
Oh, school information.
I believe the library has their own website, so if you drill into.
They do, there is, there is nothing listed under the. Board of trustee, under the library board of trustees, except for the names of the board members.
No, I mean, they have their own website off of their website on the town site. They have a private site.
They, yeah, the, the library website, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and on there, there's a separate. Information tab for information about the library and it lists the board trustees, but the only thing there is the names of the board members.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that, what, isn't the school committee? Tell me what you're looking for from the schools, because there, you know, there, it's a regional school district.
Yeah, and, but there's a department in the town, or at least it's listed on the town website called school information. And just having a general. Blurb of information of what their roles and responsibilities are towards the rest of town.
Okay. I wonder if Ryan would be a good go to, or even the town clerk with regards to what that information is. You have those, those two contacts? Because I believe that Ms. Reed, Lori Reed has been very instrumental in updating the website. And Ryan, I believe, has his pulse on every committee in town and would be able to give you at least a, a small blurb on either of them. So those would be the two people I would go to with regards to what they do for the town.
All right, I can reach out to Ryan. I, I do know he is away until the beginning of next week, but I'll shoot him off a quick email and.
Or he might be able to direct you to whoever would give you that information.
That would work just as well. So let me just make a quick note of that.
Dad, and if you have any trouble, come back to us.
All right.
So I, I had, I don't know, I do have some questions beyond that feedback. Said to you, and I have to tell you in honesty, I ju- I read your report and then I said, well, these things seem off. This is not the way this board works. And then I thought you'd get better updating from going to those, but if you already went to them. I did not pull them all down and reread them, so, so I'll just. A few of my comments are.
Madam Chair, one moment, point of order, there's somebody with a lot of background static. I'm not sure who the call in user, call in member is. There's a little bit of background static, I may have to mute them. I'm just letting you know that there's a member of the public who's just signed on that I, I may have to mute. But we can open the line back up during public comments.
Okay, don't let me forget about him.
Okay.
I don't see him, so, um, so another question. Jonathan still there?
Yep.
When you have, I, I wanted to say it's very helpful to have these updated numbers in the first part of it. And thank you for that, because it is helpful to know where we stand. But in the entities that comprise government, tell me why the fire department isn't listed there, where does it get listed?
Let me. Go to the.
Maybe it's not, I thought, well, this is an omission, you meant that, you know, you list these other, but maybe it's not.
Yep, that was just an omission, it's listed in the town departments, so it is there. It's just left out of the, the general budget funds, the police department. It was accidentally left out of that, that was in oversight, thank you for bringing it to attention.
All right, fine, so, and then the other thing is. We, we have no housing authority in town. In the notes, so I don't know what you do about that, because I guess it's still in the. In theory, it exists, right, but it is not, it's not active.
Uh, we'll work with what, we'll work with what exists.
All right, you could check with Ryan about that too.
I'll reach out to him, I'll include that.
Okay, so put that on the list and then. In the description of the CPC's description, and again, maybe you took it right from them. But it says the acquisition, preservation, restor- restoration, rehabilitation for the purpose of community. Preservation, but it doesn't say anything about part of their responsibility be, being creation of community housing. And that is one, you know, a set aside specifically for affordable housing.
Okay.
And, all right. Uh, okay, so library trustees, there was no text because you didn't know anything, I get that now. Open space committee. I don't think you need to put in when they meet.
Uh, yep, I will remove that.
And also with the open space committee, there's this tension between conservation and open space committee. Because you put in conservation, and again, you know, I'm not the totally knowledgeable person on this, but. It said deals with land acquisitions under conservation. But really, the open space committee is the one that's done the preservation. You know, it goes to the CPC and S.
I'm sure, I believe that in the past, there's been back and forth on those two committees with regards to who acquires. And who manages those properties. That might be the reason the description was put in that way, but I, I wanted to make you aware of that history.
Can you, can you talk to Ryan about that as well?
Yep, he'll get a general summary of questions to see if he can clarify things.
Because I do think the open space committee has been, if you look, if you open the CPC. List of all the projects funded, you know, that exists. They almost said all the big acquisitions were open space. So I think that, I'm not saying conservation hasn't done work in that line too, but it's, it's missing from open space. And we don't need when they meet, which is all the time anyway. Yeah, it's open space and recreation, right, the committee?
Yes.
So, but it was interestingly, like, we appropriated just a town meeting. The money to restore playground, and that was parks and recreation. So they, uh. They're also into, maybe, maybe that was in there and I just didn't notice it. You know, I read this for the last meeting and I didn't have a chance to reread it. But make sure you have parks and recreation that maintains the playgrounds.
Yep, Parks Commission is a five-member committee that serves in staggered terms and oversees activities and events that take place on town-owned recreational facilities. Okay, I will include that in there as well.
In the playgrounds, right, and then. And then, um, I know I'm probably boring everybody to death, but the planning board, us. We do, we do a lot more stuff. So we do. And I don't know how much this you want to put in, but the basic list is A and Rs, subdivisions. Special permits. Solar field permitting. The marijuana establishments. You, the, they're, they're titled differently, look at our table of contents. Wireless communication facilities, and we oversee gravel pits and gravel pit restorations. And we do not issue variances.
Okay, thank you.
Variances are totally up to the ZBA. So on the ZBA, you have issues, special permits, but they don't. ZBA only does variances and we do the special permits, as far as I know, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so they only. Okay, yep.
And then I don't know whether you want to, I don't know whether this is the place to put it, but the library just got a huge new roof. Put in in 2019. It was out of CPC funds. I don't know, I don't, I don't know why I put that in there, honestly. And then under, under the town administrator, he's the one that actually does most of the grant applications and stuff. So I would talk to Ryan about his job description. When you talk. Because I think it's not. He does more than is listed in what you said in the officers.
I will reach out to him for updated that. If you could. Create just a comprehensive list of the specific role, of the specific roles and duties that the planning board has. And if you could send that to me.
Christina, can you do that? We just put, did it recently.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much, just to make sure I don't.
Again, it is on our website, it is on our website.
In the top, under description, what we do?
Yes, it is the one, two, third. The planning board is responsible for reviewing A and Rs, general permits, earth removal permits, reclamation plans, flood plans, special permits, wireless communication. That's the comprehensive list. I updated it last month.
I will, oh, that, okay, that's why.
Sorry.
Answered the question.
And I know that a lot of boards have been updating their websites, so you might want to give them another gander.
I'll go back through.
Now that we're working from home, we want to make sure that the town has as much up to date as information as possible.
Okay, yeah, I will go back through and I'll make sure it's up to date. And then I will reach out to Ryan for anything that is missing or seems it needs extra information on. And especially for his role, because I know he is a very busy person.
Yes, he's hard to get hold of. But he's worth it, he's, yeah, I'll tell you, the, the master plan is close to his heart, he will answer you if you tell him master plan. And then there's one other thing. Which is, and you have an objective section in this, I'm sorry, I really read this a while ago.
Uh, yeah, it's a very short objective section and.
Add to it, promote the development of affording of. Affordable and moderate income housing for families and seniors. I'm trying to, I have this little crusade going to get it on the radar, because it's been neglected for a long time and we actually are working on that.
All right.
Ma'am, should that go in the, in the housing section of the master plan instead of the facilities and services?
Well, it is a service though, I don't know. I, I, I leave that to John, Jonathan.
I think, I think both. I think it should belong in the services and facilities, and I think in the housing chapter. So there is overlap there, so I would recommend both.
Okay.
And if it's an ongoing objective of one or more of the boards, then it definitely belongs in the objective category. So I will make sure to put that in there.
Okay, do, do other, do, Bill or Francois, you have other things, comments for them?
Uh, Bill, you're muted, sorry.
Sorry, that sounds good to me. Thank you for the hard work.
I, I did review it, from my perspective, nothing at this point in time. I will look forward to a final draft.
All right.
So you're going to get us back of the draft to see one more time and then we'll vote to.
Yeah, absolutely, and then we will also. Either then or perhaps a later date, bring forward recommendations as well to include with the more finalized draft of the master plan chapter.
Great, great. So, so thank you guys very much and we'll look forward to. The housing chapter, right, coming up, great. Great, and if I can provide you with any information on that, you know, let Christine know and. Try to do that, we'll try to do that.
I think I will, I think I will take you up on that offer.
Okay, there are some initiatives going on, I don't know how many of them we can actually write about. There's some of them are in the thought process, but there are some good things going on that we should include, so. Yeah, we'll connect for the next meeting. And John, be, be sure you guys check when the meeting is, because that's really up in the air right now. I'm thinking it's likely to be July 9th, which would be the Thursday, so. Avoid the second, because I think we have trouble getting quorum on the second. So if we go to the second week, there's still, I don't know, it's difficult. Can you just check in before you? And, and Christina, try to remember to tell them.
I'll make sure everyone's updated.
Christine is very good at that, she keeps us fully updated.
Yes, she is indeed, okay. Should we move on to new business, is that it for? John and Jonathan?
That is all we need for, for Mr. Voss and Mr. Hume. Before we move on to the update from the chair on the gravel pit report, which is a little bit leaner than we'd like. I didn't know if, Madam Chair, you wanted to find out what the, the call in individual might be here for? I'd hate to think that they're here for something that's already passed by.
Oh, yeah, can't ask them, yes, I'm spending, don't leave yet, maybe they were interested in this. Like, out, out it, but go ahead, see what they're here for. If it's unrelated, tell them, I'll call them on it.
Obviously, I'm Larry Green from the company nearing, I just, I think I'm calling in late regarding the. Birm update on 91 Williamsville Road.
Yes, Mr. Green, we already heard from Bill Murray and it seems like everything is progressing smoothly on your end. Do you have anything else to update the board on?
I just want to update you that loan was being spread today and tomorrow. It looks like plantings are going to be started, delivered Monday and Tuesday, and hopefully by the end of next week, we have it planted.
Great. Great. From the Chair, are you, do you, you're gonna follow up on the gate issue there too, at some point?
Yeah, that is, that is our, once we get the plantings in and we start irrigation, then we'll work on the fencing, on the gate, the ornamental gate.
Okay, yeah, Bill gave us a really positive report, so we thank you.
Okay, okay, great. All right, Joey Knight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Good catch, Christina. Thank you. I'm glad we didn't make him wait.
The problem I have is that if I can't see anyone or their name, I have no idea what they're here for.
Yeah. Yes, indeed. Okay, so, um, new business, I just wanted to, this is interesting for my board guys here, um-
I'm sorry, point of order, uh, the next item is the update from the Chair on the gravel pit report.
Oh, it is, upgrade in the gravel pit. All right, so the short, all right, here's the story on the gravel pit. You guys had, we had, we had left it that I was going to have this discussion with Ryan, that since the grant was denied for studying the town pit and also the Marinelli pit, could we now consider doing the gravel pit, the town gravel pit, which isn't a bad location, as a site for senior housing? Could we investigate that? And I don't know where I left this with you guys, but the short and the long of it is, he said, uh, call Mr. Furman, who was the person that wrote the grant. And, and he was, Ryan was very receptive to that idea. And Furman said, oh yeah, I could, I could do a report on how you would convert the gravel pit to, to senior housing. You know, and we could possibly pay from it for that study, depending on the costs from CPC funds that we have or funds that we have. But then he said, but we really think it should be in commercial industrial use, and we should go for the next round of grant funding. Because there's another round, it's the, apparently it was kind of a late application, and they think they should try this again. So, we, we set up a, a meeting to meet with, uh, this engineer who would work with Mr. Furman, who had these great ideas for what we could do with it. And I invited the Marinellis to come. I had a, a long chat with Louise Prue. Is one of the sisters, as you remember, may remember, and that was supposed to happen last Friday. But it didn't happen because the consultant that we were gonna give a tour to had a conflict of some sort. So, so that is where it stands, and, um, you know, I, I did talk to, I sent Ryan a note, he's been really hard to get hold of, it's town meeting time. Asking him when it was going to be rescheduled, so I could let Mrs. Prue know. But in the, in the process of this, I did find out from Mrs. Prue that they actually did, did some research into putting housing there for themselves of private use. And it didn't come to, it was, she calls, refers to it as green housing, and it didn't come to fruition basically because there's not good access. They said, um, the people that were studying it said, well, you need to negotiate with the town or, or some other way to get better access, and then it would be desirable. So they're not opposed to joining the town for some kind of a housing, you know, solution to this as well. So anyway, I was trying to do that. I also note that in looking through the archives, there was an article that appeared in the Gardener News that was about, um, their development of this land. And the neighbors were quite, at that time, opposed to an industrial or environment, uh, or a commercial use of that land, because it's in their backyards, you know. So there's, there's pieces, and I'm just reporting on what is, um, I'm still trying to, I'm pretty skeptical about whether that lot would be that desirable. It was passed over in the first round of grants. And I encouraged Ryan to, um, to really talk realistically about whether we want to spend another six to nine months trying for another grant to put that into a use, an industrial use of some sort.
Madam Chair, uh, the email that I got from Ryan said that they're just trying to find out what, any use, be it commercial, industrial, or residential. If, if it turns out it can't be used for industrial at all, the email that I got from Ryan stated that they're just trying to find out, if they have a definitive list, this is what this report and the grant is supposed to be. It's a report on what can and cannot be put there. If we find out we can't put septic there, we can't put industrial, then we have to shift focus. I think that at the moment, the, the, the main focus of the grant is going to be discovering what can and cannot be put on that land, period. Whether it be not good for industrial, or not good for commercial, or only usable for residential. There's just, they need a solid list so that anyone can move forward.
Because, yeah, I missed, I missed that email. I'm sorry. Did he, did he talk about rescheduling? Did I miss that?
Uh, he did. He said he's trying to look ahead to next week, because he couldn't do this week because it was town meeting.
All right, I'm sorry. I apologize, guys. I missed it. But my understanding was that the grant, my understanding was the grant that they were applying for would, from the, from Commonwealth Amass, was oriented towards industrial uses.
It is. They, for the most part, the, the, the uses that they tend to try and, um, push forward are those that will improve economic growth. But they're willing, according to the engineer, to split parcels. So if they figure out, oh, this would be great for some kind of commercial distribution in the back, they'd be willing to split it and do the front as senior housing, or even the first twenty acres as senior housing, and then use the back for, as long as the primary use, according to the engineer, is the, uh, economic growth. So he said he had no objection to using part of it for this, but you have to do, it's, it's, if you do a partial, then the majority, the fifty-five percent, has to go to the economic growth. But when you're dealing with sixty acres, fifty-five percent back in the woods, and then the front half is senior, could still be used for, hopefully, positive senior development.
Okay. I apologize, guys. I'm not up to date on my information, and that's great, Christina. So I will continue to, I will talk to the Prues again, and we'll continue to reschedule it, and maybe I'll have more information. And that's good to know, that they're at least willing consider, to consider housing there, so. Fifty-five percent, okay.
Said majority, and that's why, that's what I heard, was the majority means fifty-five percent.
Okay. All right, well-
More than half, is what they said.
Yeah. Good, well, that's not, so maybe we wouldn't have to wait until a grant round fails to get our housing considered. So that's actually really optimistic. Okay, good. All right, so questions on gravel pits, anybody?
First of all, I now have a very bad internet connection. You probably cannot hear me very well.
We can hear you.
Yeah, see you very well, but we can hear you.
Okay. Well, may, maybe I'll just take the video out and I'll get a little bit more bandwidth. My question is really in regards to the Cateystos. Have we heard anything more on that, uh, the remediation of the, uh, of the lot that's, uh, on Route 68? Has that project been initiated? Do we have any information at all?
No, I have not heard anything. I would be willing to check with Bill Murray on that as well, because, um, he's the one who they're supposed to be, uh, connecting to, but I can also get ahold of Casella Organics and find out if they've started moving yet.
I asked, guys. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just say, get a status, that's good. Go ahead.
I mean, the weather has been optimal for this, I think, in my opinion, and I was under the impression that they were, they did not start this here last year for, because of the, uh, late start, and they were really looking for dry, continuously warm weather where they could start some of this work. And it was my understanding that this was something that they were going to be starting this year. I have not heard or seen anything to the effect, and that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
And I, uh, to add to that, I haven't seen anything happening in the area on the road at all.
Okay, I mean, I think we have, the reason I'm asking about this here again, there was good forward movement, uh, for a long period of time. It was concerted effort by the Planning Board, by the Cateystos, by other members of the community and so forth, that, to make this, uh, to move this forward and make this a model. I, I'd like to be able to see if we can bring this to fruition.
Christina, find out what the story is on that.
I'll send an email out to Casella and to, um, and to, uh, Bill Murray, because he's supposed to be provided updates as soon as anything happens. I don't know what's going on, so I'll check with the both of them.
It was a second or third project, and they had shut down with coronavirus stuff. I don't know, but try to find out for us.
I will.
Okay, so, um, other new business, I just, did you read the stuff, the new business, the, the, um, notices from Westminster, Rutland, and Gardiner? I just thought it was interesting that Rutland, um, has proposed an agritourism zoning bylaw. So I thought, um, you know, I suppose it's to create opportunities for vineyards or, I don't know. But if anybody's interested, I'll try to track it down and put it in our reading.
What is it called?
It's called an agritourism zoning bylaw.
Okay.
I would appreciate getting some information.
Anybody interested, all right.
I think this is certainly something that I've seen. Well, if I've seen some of that, especially if it's really in Oakland.
Well, let's take a look at it. All right, I'll get a copy of it. I don't know whether it was, uh, on their town warrant or, or what the story is, but I'll try to track it down. I was, I thought it was interesting. One matter's not reasonably anticipated in the Chair. Of course, now it's been a week, and probably it's not that, you know, I could have reasonably gotten it out to you, but it's not terribly important. But I did want to tell you that you know, we did this MVP plan, which was supposed to open the gateway to be able to qualify for grants to fix some of the problems that were identified in the municipal vulnerable, vulnerability, what's P, plan, right? So, um, so that, and the results that plan are out, um, I thought it was a draft. But I will make sure that what we have, the summary of findings gets posted. Because it wasn't distributed, was it, Christina, to the board?
It was distributed to you. I don't believe it was, uh, distributed to the entire board. You had to sign it, not the rest of the board.
Yes. Can you put, but I did talk to Ryan about, can we release it? Can I give it to the board? And he said we could.
Okay, I'll, I'll distribute the findings.
Yes, okay, so you can see, but anyway, so Ryan jumped on that right away, or the Select Board, or whoever was involved, I'm not sure. But, and put their first grant in, and it is to study the possibility of water and sewer for the Town Center District. Water and sewer alternatives. Apparently, there's, this, apparently it's a great need, including, uh, number of properties that could be served in a well situation that's not the best. So I just wanted to tell you that it's an ongoing project. I hope it gets funded. But that's, that's what they prioritized as one of the more urgent matters in town, and now there's a grant out to study it. So, let's see. Old business, we did ninety-one, we did forty-seven, solar fields.
Yes, the notice was sent out to the solar fields.
And you've gotten one response, that's it?
Uh, no, I got a response in January from, uh, nine, from the one, the one annual report I got was in December, on time. Uh, the others have not, um, given me any response since they received the letter.
Is that the one that you have, Christine, put on the, uh, on the website?
Yes.
I just want to remark that that is a 2018 report, right? And that's not even a 2019 report.
One that I got, give me one second, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that we're on the same page.
It's, I mean, it's a nice report. I, it has all of, and, and I sent you some comments, uh, and, and back, and I think it's a, it's a good report. It has a lot of good information.
Right.
It's very succinct, it's very succinct.
Right, but we, we haven't gotten the one for 2019 yet. I got it.
And so, 2019-
Good point. I didn't notice that.
Yeah, no, it's, everything that is there is actually accurate, but it's for 2018. It could be used as a model for other, um, other solar fields to, to provide that information. I think part of the issue here for some of these, uh, organizations is, is they think of this here as an overwhelming project. Whereas how TGC did it, very succinct, it's to the point, it's basically providing us the essential information that we need. And, uh, it is actually required by the, by law, so they need to understand that this is something that they need to provide within a certain timeline.
What is the next step if nobody responds to, uh, these letters? What do we got to do next?
Well, I'm hoping a next step doesn't come. I'd hope we'd be able to send the letter again. Um, I mean, because we'd like everybody to be on, I, I like that we had, uh, Ms. Chavez show up at the meeting and be willing to converse. I'm glad that we've had 91 Williamsville Road coming in and being willing to change the berm. It would be nice, I mean, if we could get everybody to come to the table, but if they don't give us the report, um, it's, it's a requirement. We have to, you know, push, because, I mean, it also, um, I, I have to wonder also if they're sending a report somewhere else. And the reason I ask is I know that their pilot is contingent on a certain amount of ampage. So I don't know if they're reporting to another branch of our, administrator, the municipality, on how much they're generating to make sure that their pilot is up to date, their, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, their tax agreement. So I will, I'm gonna double-check that just to be certain. Uh, I'll check with, um, George in the Board of Obsessors office, and I'll check with Ryan. Um, and then in, if I don't hear anything about that, I mean, I'll, we'll have to send the letter again, but I'd like, like to give them at least a month to respond, especially because, again, I'm not positive, these are all going to the most recent owners, as we learned, um, sometimes.
Right.
These, uh, have changed hands, and nobody told us, or, you know, gave us a forwarding address.
Hey Christina, is this one of those situations where you could reduce it to a fill-in-the-blank kind of form? And I find people do respond to that, if better, because they have, what do you think?
I mean, it's up to the board, but we do need, I mean, I sent them that letter, and that letter is basically a fill-in-the-blank. It gave them exactly what they need to do according to our bylaw.
Oh, okay, it was pretty straightforward. I don't remember it well, in my mind.
There, I think, again, if we take the example of the one that we received for 2018, which is really a two-pager, very, very, very basic information in there, uh, we could use that as a model. And again, we can, we can anonymize it, because it does not have to indicate who the actual owner is right now of that particular lot. I would suggest that there are some additional pieces of information included in there, namely, the address, the date of the report, uh, who is submitting the report, and a point of contact, and then just the elementary information that we are requesting. And to your point, that's just fill-in-the-blank, and it's something that some, a clerk in most of these cases can do in a matter of, uh, an hour or under an hour. I wouldn't be surprised.
I just think we've had such not-good luck with letters, that maybe if you send a form, it might, if it doesn't take long-
Exactly. Precisely, using, using that form and using that as a, as a, as a model by which they can, that we can prepare a form, I think that might be very helpful.
And, and then in the cover letter say, please respond within twenty-four, you know, within, by such and such a date.
Right.
Bring your records up to date. Just try to be a little more how the real world works. I don't know, I try it, but if it's a nightmare to create the form, I'm not trying to add work, because I know you've got a lot of work.
All I have to do is redact theirs, and then just ask everybody to please send a, a standardized copy, including any changes in ownership and, um, contact information.
And I would give them a ten days. Please return by ten days from, I don't know, a deadline, some kind of date, because otherwise it goes in the someday pile and nothing ever gets done.
Right. I will definitely see if I can get a response from all of the solar fields. There are only essentially five, so hopefully we can hear back from all of them shortly.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna try. All right, so, um, I don't, I don't think, we did the gravel pits, we did the solar fields, affordable housing, we do, I do know that, um, Habitat is putting together their bid. I don't know whether it's been received, and I'm not sure of the deadline, but I know that they are bidding on the affordable lot. I don't know whether anybody else is either. So really no update on that master plan we did, bylaw update, I'd like to, these are the, uh, oh, I wondered, there is one bylaw update, and that is, um, one thing, as I did get to talk to Bill about the site planning for solar. And he, he says that, because this came up, Francois, remember this, Florida Selectmen, that it's very standard operating procedure now to do sightline studies. And they're not that expensive, and he can give me the language on how that would be done. So before, when we get reorganized and we get back to the, the Select Board on this, I will have that information. I'll follow up with Bill. But it's not expensive, and it's the way it's done, and he says it's much better than, and he's done them. And he says it's much better than saying, you can't put up a solar field if you can see anything from anywhere. You know, it's not a standard you can work with, right? So, anyway, more, that's just the only thing I've done on those bylaws, but at least it's something. I'll try to get back, I'll put that on, to get back next month. And I'll talk to Bill about it. All right, and then administrative matters- And I'll talk to Bill about it. All right. And then administrative matters.
Yes, I, I have one thing, Madam Chair, just to remind everyone that the election is coming up and that no matter when our planning, next planning board meeting is, we will have to do reorganization. I'm hoping everyone can come to the next meeting. We need to do reorganization. We need to do who is going to elect to be on the boards that the planning board has to fill. At the moment, everybody's been doing it for a year. And we also need our clerk. I don't know if Bill Holmans wants to continue to be our clerk, but we still need those two positions filled and then the subsidiary boards filled as well.
Yeah.
You want to send out an email of what those boards are, the positions, so we can think about it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I think we need to also let the folks know who are currently on some of the boards that they may actually be receiving, as did I, a notification that my term was expiring and it was actually asked to me as to whether or not I would like to commit myself for another year. And I politely declined because I said, this is not something that I as an individual decide, but we as a board decide as to who participates in which committee. So I think it'd be a very good idea if, if you might send a quick note to the other board members that whatever committees they are participating in, that that should probably be the same way that we ought to be handling that particular situation.
Got it.
So you would see like the boards and committees and then presently served to the past year with those names and then a blank for for us to think about.
Also, there is one other quick matter that will have to be addressed after the election and that will be the petition to the town for a new associate member. Those are only one year terms and so Mr. Dubois, his term will be coming up and we'll have to post again for applicants for an associate planning board member.
Okay, put that on your list. And we will do that. I want to also say to all your board members, I'm happy to let someone else chair a committee if you want. I would just plow the energies into in, be in, be in the foot soldier and into, and into the affordable housing issues, which of course are my pet thing, but so, think about it. And if you want to take on those duties, you know, I'm willing to do it again, but I'm not wedded to do it again, you know, wedded to that. And you're not going to hurt my feelings. So think about it.
I think you're doing an awesome job, Alex.
Be, as I say, be a helper. Well, thanks, but I'm very serious about that, if anybody wants to do that. I think that we don't need to reach out to Josh until, to see if he's interested in continuing until we get through the organizational meeting. So just.
And also we have to then submit, we'll have to, it's not about whether or not he's willing to do it. We have to put out a call to see if there's anyone else who wants to apply, because then we have to make our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and go through that whole process again.
Right, you're right.
And have them appoint our associate planning board member.
His term expires and that, that needs to be then, we, we need to restart the process as we do every year.
And hopefully as quickly as possible, we may have a special permit coming through. You will be alerted once I have a finalized application, but we may be having a special permit coming through. So that fifth member and a site plan review. So it turns out in our, and I didn't know this, in our bylaws, associate members also sit in on site plan reviews.
Wow, good catch. All right.
We might have two, two matters that we need an associate member for.
Yeah, well, I, I kind of hope he's willing to continue on. But I think we need to open it up to everybody that's interested, you know, that's the law and that's what we're going to do. So. Great. So bring that up, put it right on the agenda for the next meeting. And the next meeting is what we need to talk about. So the first, we've been meeting Wednesdays. We were asked to meet Thursdays. Is it clear that Craig can join us if we meet on Thursdays? I mean, he's not here tonight and that's why we moved it to a Thursday, do you know?
Craig informed me that the reason he is not here tonight is regrettably, he had to use up a lot of vacation before his end of year. So this was, because this was a one week notice. I mean, he had a schedule of our meetings and this one was not on it. Same thing with John DiMalia. Both of them had vacation this, this week and that's why they're not here. So normally Thursdays work well for Craig. He said Tuesdays maybe not, but Thursdays would definitely work well.
Well, Thursdays work better for Bill. So.
Tuesday nights don't work for me because I have other boards on Tuesday nights. So Thursday should be great for me.
And did you talk, Christina, did you ask John, did you get a chance to ask him about Thursdays in general?
I did not, but I'm gonna, basically that's something I was hoping we could bring up this meeting, but he's not here this meeting. So hopefully we can finalize that at our next meeting. But at the present, are we going to try and have that meeting on the ninth?
That's my, unless anybody wants to try to meet on July 2nd. I think it's made hard to get a quorum on July 2nd. Maybe not. Are you guys all around? I have no opposition.
It would sound better for everyone.
The ninth is better. All right, let's, let's, let's make it for the ninth. Francois, the ninth?
Open eye today. I mean, I, I am, am I unmuted?
You, we, you're breaking up.
Say it again. Right. I am, I'm available either the ninth or the second.
Okay, thank you.
The second or the ninth? Whatever.
We heard you.
Yeah, I got it. Do you have preference, you guys? I mean, this.
Thursday would be better for me.
Okay, so if we do Thursday and then we do, do you want to do the ninth over the second? It's actually the second Thursday in July.
I think without checking with our other two board members, we might want to do the ninth only because the fourth, the second falls closer to the fourth.
Yeah, I think it's.
Weekend is tough.
And some people do not have.
All right. And Christina has to get in the queue so we don't get bumped off Zoom. All right, so let's July 9th at 6:30 for our next meeting. I don't know that we need to vote on that if it's agreeable to everybody.
Sounds good.
All right. Any, is there any other old business or new business that anybody has?
And there are no public comments. I, we can't actually discuss any other business unless it's supposed to be on the agenda, unless it fell under matters not anticipated by the chair. That's sort of the rule.
That's true. You're supposed to, if you want to get something on the agenda, let Christina know. Or me know. All right. So we've done the announcement of the next meeting. We don't have anybody for a second public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I am seconding that motion, Francois.
Okay, it's not debatable or discussable. So lived all eye.
Holman's eye.
Francois Steiger, eye.
All right.